So first, we're going to hear from Vanessa Price. Ms. Price is the Director of the National Drug Court Institute, which is the primary training and technical assistance divisions of the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. Ms. Price has provided training to numerous drug court programs nationwide and abroad on topics related to substance abuse, drug testing, recovery-related services, and program training, development, and implementation. Next will be Dr. Fay Taxman. Dr. Taxman is a professor in the Criminology, Law, and Society Department and the Director for the Center for Advancing Correctional Excellence at George Mason University. Dr. Taxman specializes in designing and evaluating evidence-based court programs and interventions. Ms. Price.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa Price. I am the Director of the National Drug Court Institute at the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. Prior to assuming my role as the Director, I retired after 22 years in law enforcement, most recently as Inspector with the Oklahoma City Police Department, where I had the privilege of being the department's primary liaison to the Oklahoma County Drug Court Team. In nearly, in my nearly two years of participation, I'm sorry, two decades of participation in drug court teams and training hundreds of courts nationally and internationally, I have found no other method as effective at reducing crime and saving valuable resources by ending the revolving door of those with substance use and co-occurring disorders entering and re-entering the criminal justice system. I even used this model because I felt so strongly about it when I served as the Chair of the Pardon and Parole Board for the State of Oklahoma for two years. In that capacity, I had the opportunity to train other board members on risk and need in addressing all of those key issues that we were able to address through my training and experience in drug court. And based on that, we definitely saw a tremendous impact in offenders as they were being released on parole through the State of Oklahoma, and we saw great improvements in that respect. So Drug Court reaches far beyond serving those that are in the traditional criminal justice system, preventing them from going to prison, but we can also use that model for those that are being released from prison and going back out into community, looking at all of those key best practices and the standards that go along with it. The United States is in the midst of an opioid epidemic. Americans from all ages, areas, ages, and socioeconomic backgrounds are being affected by the surge of opioid misuse. In fact, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, at least 91 Americans die each day from an opioid overdose, accounting for more than 60% of drug overdose deaths in the United States. But it is hardly the first time our country has faced this epidemic. In the 1980s, crack cocaine was infecting the streets and cities across America, sparking policymakers nationwide to adopt policies viewed as tough on crime. These policies, coupled with the now infamous War on Drugs, emphasized harsh punishment for any type of drug-related crime, but quite simply, it did not work. For more than 10 years, serving as a police officer on patrol in Oklahoma City, I tried to arrest our community out of the problem. And clearly, it was not working because in the time it took me to arrest and complete a report, the offender had posted bond and was out getting, engaging in that criminal activity again and engaging in drug use. Nowhere in the country was there, was it more evident than Miami, Florida? Crack cocaine was king, and falling victim to its rapid spread were finding themselves in and out of justice system powerless to do little more than try to incarcerate its way out of public health crisis. Fed up with the backlog of cases involving people with serious substance use disorder and overcrowded, overspent jails, a group of professionals in the county justice system decided to come up with a solution. In 1989, under the supervision of Judge Stanley Goldstein, Miami-Dade opened the first program that would become known as Drug Court. In sharp contrast to practice today, emphasis in this court was placed on providing the ma, not providing the maximum amount of jail time, but more focusing on treatment and accountability for those individuals, which is something Drug Court provides. The structure is there, something that these individuals have never had for a large majority of their life. And so in Drug Court, the drug, the judge, the prosecutor, defense attorney, law enforcement, and probation officers work as a team, along with clinicians, case managers, and treatment providers to ensure each program participant receives an individualized, evidence-based treatment plan. In these new courts, participants were capable of overcoming their addiction and not seen as society outcasts, whose only place in the world was behind bars. And what we know today is that it is working. Soon jurisdictions across the country, in search of their own solutions to the growing drug crisis, started adopting this experimental model in Miami. Courts from Rochester, New York, to Kansas City, Missouri, to Portland, Oregon, were finding Drug Court was not only saving lives, but saving thousands of taxpayer dollars, making it easier to sell to local and state governments. My experience started in May of, in March of 1998 in Oklahoma County when we started our first Drug Court program. And looking at the model that was established by the National Association of Drug Court Professionals at that time, we embraced that model. We had statutes that help us, helped guide us through the process of giving equal access to all individuals that were eligible for the services. As a result of that program and following our first set of graduates, we were able to put a number with, with the effect of the program as far as cost savings. And in an 18-month period, we saved the Department of Corrections $13 million, a little bit over, actually, $13 million, looking at the, the sentences of those individuals that would have graduated from the Drug Court program. And this was highly impactful for our legislators, and it showed that in our state, we really wanted to take a serious look at how we could improve those, that footprint of drug courts across our state in Oklahoma. Soon jurisdictions began to embrace this solution. And as the 1990s progressed, court began, courts began operating in more and more jurisdictions across the country. But even as the drug courts received authorization in the 1994 Crime Bill, sending the number of drug courts in the United States skyrocketing, the movement lacked a clearly defined model. That changed in 1997, with the newly formed National Association of Drug Court Professionals. Working with the Bureau of Justice Assistance, published a document called "Defining Drug Courts: The 10 Key Components," known in the field now as the 10 Key Components. This early publication would become the core framework of Drug Court, of the Drug Court model, setting the stage for best practices and expansion of Drug Courts to serve other populations. This population would expand to include DWI offenders, communities of tribal communities, families, veterans, and other populations across the United States. As more communities turned to drug courts in the 21st century to help reduce crime and lower rising criminal justice costs, the body of research continued to expand, making Drug Court the most researched intervention in the drug, in the justice system. The first wave of research confirmed that Drug Courts effectively did reduce drug use and crime while saving dollars. We saw that, it was very evident in the State of Oklahoma. With this, researchers then turned to focusing on determining why courts work and what elements of the model are most critical to the success of the program. We now know that the effectiveness of Drug Courts depends largely on the adherence to the 10 key components. Courts that ignore or even loosely adopt the components see lower graduation rates and higher recidivism, all resulting in lower cost savings. Going beyond simple validating the broad principles of the 10 key components, the research gave them life, cementing them in our field as standards for practice. Armed with this research, NADCP recognized the need to provide Drug Courts with guidance on how to operationalize the components and ensure fidelity to the model. Research moves the subjectiveness of accepting someone in a Drug Court program to more of a model of equity and inclusion across populations in the Drug Court field. We know now that Drug Court is most effective for those at the highest risk for recidivism and the highest need of treatment for substance use and disorder. In the field, we call that high-risk, high-need individuals. They are those that are hardest to, to address those issues, but we get the greatest return on the dollar when we do serve that population and make them a target. Moreover, we know outcomes are further improved for participants if they complete 200 or more hours of drug treatment counseling, take advantage of medication-assisted treatment when applicable, and have access to a wide range of complementary social services, including housing assistance, family counseling, and education services. We commonly call these wraparound services. If these services aren't available, it is the equivalent of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if you will, because we may have gotten the baby clean, but there are still some other issues around them in their environment that need, they need to clean up, and they need help in, in case management with. And so this new model provides an opportunity through the best practice standards to help address those, those concerns. Knowing these and other critical elements, NADCP developed the Adult Drug Court Best Practice Standards. The standards incorporate more than a quarter century of research defining appropriate practices for Drug Courts across a spectrum of highly researched principles, including target populations, team roles, equity and inclusion, and evaluations, and others. Since their release, the effect of the standards on the Drug Court field has been profound. New Drug Courts are using the standards as the foundation for building a successful program, and existing courts are using them to adopt new policies and retool their programs. Already, 22 states have either adopted NADCP's best practice standards or are incorporating them into their own standards. Last year, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy awarded NADCP with funding to aid states in implementing the standards in their jurisdictions. 10 standards outlined, outlined in two volumes were carefully chosen based on research showing they unequivocally improve outcomes in Drug Court. Of course, there are other essential practices that courts perform designed to answer the unique needs of their communities not addressed by the standards. The Drug Court field has always and will continue to follow the research. We so fully expect the standards will continue to evolve with time, and further volumes will be released as new research continues to be validated regarding other essential practices. The standards are applied to other models of treatment courts outside of adult drug courts. However, when applying the standards to other models such as DWI courts and Veterans Treatment Court, consideration must be given to the population that is being served and what standards really apply to those as far as the research is concerned to support those populations. In conclusion, what started in Miami as a bold plan to reduce recidivism in 1999, 1989, is today an international movement dedicated to a smarter and economic, smarter economic and more effective approach to substance use and mental health disorders in the criminal justice system. There are more than 3,000 treatment courts in the United States, covering every state and territory, serving a variety of populations, including adults, juveniles, federal offenders, tribal communities, veterans, and many others. I'm honored to testify before you today about this lifesaving program that I truly do believe makes a difference in the lives of individuals, in the lives of communities, and in the lives of families across America. Thank you for your time, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Dr. Taxman?
Okay, thank you. My question, thank you.
We have a traffic light system too, so.
I see.
Green light, yellow, and red, just, just to help let you know how, how much time you have.
Okay. Thank you very much. So my name is Fay Taxman. I'm a university professor at George Mason University up the road in Fairfax, Virginia. My area of expertise is in the area of sentencing and corrections, and I'm part of the Department of Criminology, Law, and Society, and I also run a research center called the Center for Advancing Correctional Excellence. So what I'd like to devote my time today is around the concept of alternatives to incarceration and thinking about evidence-based practices. And I want to focus my attention because the terminology "alternatives to incarceration" actually started in the late 80s, early 90s to indicate something between probation and prison, because there was this perspective that probation wasn't tough enough, it didn't really punish people, nor did it actually achieve objectives of changing behavior. And so Norville Morris, who at that time was at the University of Chicago, and Michael Tonray, who is now a professor at the University of Minnesota, actually wrote a landmark book called Between Probation and Prison, that really talked about the need for more intermediate sanctions, not alternatives, because the concept of alternatives is that basically we're looking at a secondary punishment that is in lieu of incarceration, instead of looking at a legitimate punishment. And so what I'd like to make the point this morning is that really what we have learned over the last 30 years is that we actually have access to legitimate punishment vehicles that can be used to really identify, you know, a type of sentence that is more appropriate for an individual and to diminish the use of incarceration, because what we know from the research literature is that actually incarceration is, actually contributes to more recidivism, and in the research literature itself, Dan Nagin, Frank Cullen, Alex Pacaro, other scholars in the field of criminology have basically found it to be criminal genetic, i.e. the schools of crime. And therefore, who we place into prison and how we use incarceration, it should be of great concern, as I know it is to the sentencing commission. Now, you know, let's put it in context, you know, the United States is the, basically has 5% of the world's population, and yet we incarcerate 25% of, of the world's people incarcerated. That's an indicator that is not necessarily perceived as being positive, but it also suggests to us that maybe we should be thinking about how we use this resource of incarceration. So Acting Chairman Pryor, you indicated that there are high recidivism rates from people who go to prison. What we don't know is what would be those recidivism rates if people were not incarcerated. And in fact, what the research literature would suggest to us is that we could actually reduce those recidivism rates considerably if we place people into the more appropriate intermediate punishment for that particular person. Drug treatment courts, as Ms. Price has indicated, is one example of an appropriate punishment for a select type of person. But I think what's most important to us today is to recognize that the vehicles that, you know, that we have relied upon as a society, incarceration, long-prison sentences, actually have had counter-influences in terms of citizenship, in terms of, you know, citizens and their citizenship in our society, as well as issues related to social injustice. And we've had a number of opportunities, including the National Research Council a few years ago, who basically looked at the issues about the length of our sentences. So the question is, what is the way forward? How should we be thinking about this in 2017? And this is where I would ask you to really look at what we've learned in the research over the last 40 years in this particular area, the movement of what is entitled "What Works: Evidence-Based Practice, Evidence-Informed Practice," there's a number of titles there. But I think what the evidence-based practice, where I know what the evidence-based practice model offers to us is that we should, you know, think about punishments for individuals based upon trying to reduce the recidivism rates, and the best way to do that is to tailor the punishment based upon the risks that the individual offers to society and the needs that the client has. And those needs are those targets that we can actually, you know, respond to in order to really reduce the likelihood of recidivism. So in the evidence-based practice literature, there is a list of needs of what substance use disorders is on that list. And for substance use disorders, we actually have a number of very effective vehicles to, you know, to address the behaviors of an individual and help that person achieve recovery. As Ms. Price indicated, drug treatment courts are on the top of that list, along with therapeutic communities, along with some models of probation supervision, particularly some models that the U.S. Administrative Office of the Courts subscribe to, as well as some of the effective treatment programs like medically assisted treatments with cognitive behavior programming. So there is a list of different vehicles that we can use to really reduce the recidivism rates, improve the recovery, and actually help people deal with those addiction disorders that drive the criminal behavior that brings them to the attention of the criminal justice system. That's a portion of the population. There's also people who subscribe to antisocial cognitions and cultures, and therefore, we also have an assortment of treatment interventions for that particular individual. So I see your little red light has gone on. So I'm gonna just make two concluding remarks. First of all, I hope that the Commission really considers looking at the empirical literature and thinking about reducing the use of incarceration, particularly with the strides that the U.S. Administrative Office of the Courts have made in terms of adopting evidence-based supervision. You know, I've had the pleasure of working with the U.S. Administrative Office of the Courts for about the last decade, and they, they have embraced an instrument called PICRA that they developed and they use. And it is, I would say, first of all, it's one of the most thoroughly researched instruments, and they've done some good work in terms of identifying different typologies of offenders and what types of interventions would be best served for that typology. That's how we're gonna make it reduce that recidivism rate. The second point that I want to make, and Ms. Price alluded to this, is program quality is a key, and we don't spend enough effort, we, the, our society, on really supporting the programs and services that are, you know, that offenders participate in. Program quality is one of the largest issues that reduces the recidivism rates, and yet that is something that we can really invest a lot of our time and energy pretty cost-effectively, and it will have a greater yield to the communities where people live. My team has developed some techniques of really trying to give people information about, you know, the quality of the programs that they have in their jurisdiction, so people can actually focus attention on trying to use the evidence-based treatment literature and integrate that into their particular programs. And I know that it might be slightly outside the scope of the Commission to really look at program quality issues, but I think that, you know, in your role as the Commission, you could actually ask the Administrative Office of the Courts or others, the people are, communities that people are sentenced to, to, for judges to pay attention to those issues. Many judges I know, including Judge Sorekin here, you know, in their work, in their communities have really worked with local programs to improve the quality of those programs, and they see the great benefit that actually can occur. So judges as leaders in their communities, I think, have a large role of really doing what drug treatment courts have done, is, you know, getting, you know, justice actors as a solidified force to really improve the quality of services that are offered to people involved in the justice system. So it's in our society's benefit, right? You cited a statistic about 70%, I think, recidivism rates over an eight-year period of time, if I got it correctly?
Actually, the 76% recidivism rate was for the state drug offenders, and contrasted with the more like 50% of the drug traffickers followed over an eight-year period in the federal system.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm used to hearing the BJS numbers of, you know, 70, 76%.
Yeah, the 70-something percent, that, those are the BJS numbers.
So, but my point is, is that, you know, as a society, we are not providing the effective services and punishments to really help change those behaviors, and we know that we do have a laundry list of, you know, toolkit that's available to do that. And I would just encourage the Commission to look at that and to really think about how better to do more of, you know, a continuum of sanctioning than just really relying upon incarceration. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Taxman. I would ask either one of you, do you have a sense of whether what you referred to as alternatives or intermediate punishments, whether the research shows that they work best with lower-risk offenders, more often seen in the, in the state criminal justice systems, and how, if at all, that contrasts with the federal offender population that we see, whether that is a higher-risk group and whether those, those kinds of programs have been shown to work with the kind of offenders that we in the federal court see?
So the, the concept of low risk is basically that the person has a low likelihood of further engagement in the justice system. And typically, it all depends upon the instrument that one uses, but typically, risk is different than needs. So you're, you're typically focusing your attention on people who are low-risk but also low-needs. And in the state systems, for the most part, those individuals, you know, are best served by the minimalist interventions that we can offer, because on their own, they can be punished, you know, through community service, fines, you know, small punishments, and basically do fairly well without the state needing to actually intervene. When you have a low-risk person that has some needs, like, let's say, a substance use disorder or opioid disorder, then you want to really channel that person into a program dealing with that need. Typically, though, most low-risk people do not have a lot of needs. And we actually, it's been about five years now, we did a study for the National Institute of Corrections for people who were coming out of federal prisons, who went to the federal reentry centers and then went on to probation, and we used, at that time, the instrument that the federal probation system used. It was called the RPI, and we used that to look at the percentage of people coming out of prison and what their risk level was, because at that time, the Federal Bureau of Prisons did not real, did not have a risk instrument. And surprisingly, in the federal reentry centers, somewhere between 30 to 40% of the individuals actually scored low-risk on the Administrative Office of the Courts instrument. And by the, placing them in the federal reentry centers, they actually ended up doing worse than the group of people who got released from federal prison who didn't, who were low-risk, who did not go through the federal reentry center. So what we've generally learned is that, you know, if we give too much attention to people who are low-risk, we're not gonna really address the issues. On the other hand, the moderate risk to high risk is where we should be focusing our attention for programs and services. And that way, also, if we think about the scarce resources that states and the federal government have for treatment services, we can, you know, basically channel ourselves to focusing attention on those specific needs and using effective programs like drug treatment courts for people with serious substance use disorders. I myself, I know the research literature, you know, fairly well, and I think there's some, you know, there's a debate going on in the research literature now about the high, moderate risk and who should go into drug courts. I personally think that, you know, given the success of drug courts, anyone who has a serious addiction disorder, whether they're moderate risk or high risk, should, is best served either by the drug treatment court or some type of therapeutic community based upon what we know from the research findings.
How much does the type of risk matter versus, well, for example, you may be a high-risk of re-offending because you're an addict, right? But that's, that's different from someone who's a high-risk of recidivating with violence because they've had a history of violence?
Right.
Well, what about that?
So, you know, so we know much more about treating addiction disorders and the impact of programs on reducing recidivism rates for addiction disorders than actually aggression and violence prevention. It's an area of emerging research, and there's a number of studies currently going on. But essentially, by using cognitive behavioral therapies, which have been demonstrated for almost 40 years to be the effective type of intervention for people involved in the justice system. justice system, you can actually cut the recidivism rate by a third to a half. You know, it all depends upon the individual and the quality of the program. So you can get those high reductions in recidivism rate if you have really high-quality programs. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of high-quality programs. More likely than not, the effect sizes from meta-analysis are more in the smaller range of 15% to 20%. But that's still, you know, compared to the recidivism rates of people coming out of prisons, markable reductions and something to consider.
Can I ask you a question about, you noticed in your testimony that the results haven't been the same for reentry? And I was curious, either of you, if you're familiar with the reentry model, why they haven't been as successful, or if you have any evidence of reentry courts that have worked well and what their features are? I'm just trying to get a sense if there's research that shows using these as reentry courts or intervening at that stage is helpful.
Do you want to go first?
I would speak to the, with respect to, reentry courts have taken on a different model with regard to the drug court model. And so within that, they have to consider certain things. For instance, in the federal system, looking at a court as a reentry model, what we've seen, although the research isn't complete on it, what we've seen is that they do tend to do better because that structure is provided there and the accountability that goes along with supporting them through that system. In the traditional drug court system, a couple of years ago, the Department of Justice had ARSAT grants, which are residential substance abuse treatment programs, which were the reentry model. And what they saw in those models before the research actually came out on drug courts was is that when you offered comprehensive wraparound services for an individual, they did better. And particularly, they did better when we were looking at the high-risk, high-need population. That funding came out at a time where we were really dealing with a high occurrence of methamphetamine addiction. And so there were a lot of needs for those individuals, and they fell in that high-risk, high-need category, speaking with regard to if they went on traditional probation, they were not going to be successful. We did not look at the issue of violence because typically, drug courts across the country, it was prohibitive for them to be in there if they had a violent history or a propensity toward violence. And so what we know is, is that when you take a look at that individual, as Dr. Taxman said, you really do have to look at those core issues and be able to have, regardless of what the model is, you have to have those services and you have to have complete, comprehensive, evidence-based services for those individuals in order for them to be successful. It has to speak to what their needs are in order for that program to have an effect on them.
Do you need to have a judge be involved in that, or is that something that can just be done through probation? Because I guess one of the questions is, how important is it to have judicial involvement with this versus, you know, the probation department leading the way on the wraparound services and everything else?
I'll give you one stat that really speaks to that. I am, personally, I've seen the impact that a judge has on courts. And what the research says through Dr. Doug Marlowe is, is that that judge spending three minutes talking with that individual about what's been going on with them had a greater impact than any other interaction of team members. It's not to say that those other impacts or interactions were not impactful, but what it says is that when that person that has been through the criminal justice system, that has a significant history, has a positive interaction, where the judge knows what's going on with them, what their level of accountability is, what they've been doing in treatment, and can speak individually to that person, then it made a difference because there was a certain buy-in, there was a certain level of respect that that individual began to develop for criminal justice that had never existed before. So just three minutes with each individual, the research says that it reduced recidivism and it increased cost savings for that particular court.
I'd like to.
Sorry, I just had a really quick question. I'm actually in favor of drug courts because I helped get the drug court together in Maryland and as well in the District of Columbia, but I do have a really pointed question with regard to recidivism. So have studies been done taking a person who is, has gone through drug courts, a group of people who have gone through the drug courts and people who have not? What is the actual difference in recidivism rates? I haven't heard that number.
So we do have those numbers. I don't have them here with me.
That's going to be a really crucial thing.
Because our researcher was not able to make it, that has actually facilitated that research, but I can get that information to each and every one of you. That's really simple, getting an email to you guys with all of that information. We do have it, and there were cohort comparison studies with similar populations that were charged with similar crimes, that went through the traditional system, and then those that went through the drug court system, and looking at all of those outcomes in areas of treatment and involvement with different members of law enforcement, being as members of the team, looking at who the components were, what type of services they received, and the interactions amongst those team members with that individual. So we do have that data that can be available.
Just as a follow-up, I totally agree that wraparound services are helpful. The issue is going to be how helpful in order for people to continue to invest, so.
So I would refer you to a meta-analysis that was completed by, and I can provide you a copy with it, O.J. Mitchell and David Wilson, who's the chair of my department, and Doris McKenzie at the Penn State University, which they completed in 2014, where they looked at the available drug treatment court literature, and they compared and synthesized the literature to look at the impact of recidivism. And they essentially found approximately a 20% to 25% effect size, which is, you know, a small difference but a substantial difference in terms of recidivism rates. And that piece of research, which basically, the concept of a meta-analysis is to synthesize all the available studies, basically is used as, you know, the foundation for evidence-based practices. I, oh, sorry.
I have a sense that judges, federal judges are of the opinion that they are actually operating a drug court, by and large, because of the great volume of drug cases that we get. So I'm interested in the distinction between the operation of a drug court at the outset versus the operation of a drug court for people who have failed some type of court supervision, either through the reentry or supervised release violation and so forth. Do you, have you, does your drug court information, where you say, look, we have a lower rate of recidivism, a higher rate of success of treating these people, does that distinguish between people who are coming into the justice system before a conviction and have an addiction problem versus those people who have been convicted, have served some type of time in custody, and then come out and, as we refer to them, basically a reentry issue? Do you distinguish between those two groups?
I think there-
As the drug court?
I think there may be a, using the same word with different meanings as far as reentry is concerned. What we consider reentry is someone that's coming out of prison and they have a term to serve on probation and they're reentering, as opposed to a failure. We usually look at those as probation failures. And we do take those individuals and follow them through the drug court program, which may be a little bit different. We may be speaking to different terms than you are.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out for a judge to implement some of these programs or to consider some of these programs, we're very structured in terms of where we see the person, when we see the person, what remedies are available, or what the procedure is. Very, very, you know, it's all set out and it's been followed in a particular way, whether it's good or bad, it's there. And I'm trying to figure out if research evidence shows that, look, if you take a person who has an addiction problem and treat that person a particular way, as you are urging, for whatever words you want to call it, whether you want to call it alternative incarceration, whether you want to call it addressing those factors that govern behavior, cognitive therapy and so forth, I want to see whether we can distinguish between those people that we get initially, they've gone through, perhaps they have records, but we're seeing them for new charges, versus those people who have been placed on supervised release or probation and have, quote, failed. That is, that they have committed a further violation of whatever the terms and conditions of supervised release and probation. And have, do you have the statistics that sort of show that there is, if there is, some difference between those groups?
So the meta-analysis that I referred to, essentially, it does not include people who are released from prison. It actually looks at actually pre-adjudication versus adjudication. And pre-adjudication are clients that, you know, basically enter the drug court model before they're actually sentenced, as compared to those people who enter the drug court at sentencing, as a form of sentencing. And that particular body of research found that the pre-adjudication reduces recidivism more so than the adjudication-based drug treatment court. But I do want to make, I want to clarify, and I think the language does get really So when referring to drug treatment courts, we're actually, you know, if you use the standards that NADCP has promoted for the last 30-some-odd years, that is different than probation with treatment, or it's different than people being released and coming back to, you know, and being placed in some sort of treatment program. And the difference is, is that the justice actors, judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys, case managers, probation officers, and then the treatment providers really are a team. And that team works to reinforce a certain message to the client that, you know, they're being given this opportunity to participate in an intensive program, they're supporting them, and supporting here means both emotional support but also the recognition that the person is, you know, taking responsibility for their behavior through the participation in this program. And that type of support is, you know, essentially what is considered the glue of the drug treatment court model because it sends a consistent message to the offender or the client, whatever terminology one wants to use, that they are interested in their recovery and also they're interested in reduced recidivism, and people are going to work together. That's a different model than when you have a, you know, a sentence that includes probation plus treatment. And I think it's really important to distinguish because, you know, that's where, you know, the question about, is the judge needed? Well, the judge and all the actors are needed because they're sending a consistent message to the person. And, you know, the research literature, you know, suggests that that message being delivered by the broader range of justice actors is the powerful glue that reinforces that commitment to change and recovery. And, you know, Ms. Price indicated there's 3,000 drug courts, and there's, you know, about 100,000 people nationwide that participate in those drug courts. We would be better as a society, in my perspective, if we expanded the number of people who could participate in drug courts. I'd like to answer the question about reentry courts.
Yeah, we're going to have to wrap this up fairly soon.
Okay, sorry. But I think it's important. So the research on reentry courts is really emerging, and part of, I think, the stickiness of that research, to be honest, is that if you don't know what the driving criminal behaviors are, and you're not treating that through the reentry courts, you're just trying to provide wraparound services, then you're not really focusing attention on changing people. With addictions, it's clear, we're trying to actually deal with addiction disorder. But some of the other court models, you know, we're trying to solve sometimes some social problems like homelessness and prostitution. But I think with reentry, if we focused our attention much more on some of the decision-making skills of clients and employment opportunities, you know, as a way of really helping people become stable citizens in their community, then we could have the same effect.
Okay, thank you to both of you. We need to move on to our next panel.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here and sharing your testimony today.
Thank you.